And he had the tape on the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the February 25th Board of Education Meeting and Work Session. Could I have someone read a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Sure. I move that the agenda of Monday, February 25th, 2019 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Yeah, second.
This will be a roll call.
Director Borcharding.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. We're going to go into a public hearing, but I believe Dr. Buck has some comments to make.
Yes, I'd just like to open this public hearing, I'd like to talk a little bit about the three calendars and the proposed changes that are in front of the board tonight. The first one is in the 1819 calendar. The change that's really the board approval portion of it is the April 19th date. So April 19th is currently not a Blue Diamond date, and so Blue Diamond dates are the dates that are on there that identify as days that could become school days. So what we're asking in this case is that the board make April 19th a Blue Diamond Day, and that was in front of you the last time we met. And because we did have a snow day last week, kind of lose track of this as we go here, but April 19th, if approved tonight, will become that school day. And then just as a reminder, we're also moving towards full days on Fridays from March 1st to May 10th, and then we've added a few days on at the end of the year as instructional days, but those were already Blue Diamond Days, so those don't require anything as part of this vote. As it relates to the 19th and 20th, or the 1920 calendar, we had already asked the board to approve and had approved the 1920 calendar, but what we'd like you to do is go back and consider making January 20th and April 10th as instructional days potentially, so those will become potentially Blue Diamond Days on that calendar, so that if we get into another winter like this next year, we're already proactively set with those as Blue Diamond Days, so we wouldn't have to come back. And then there's one other change in that calendar that we're guided by feedback in working with CREA and our teachers. There's a new teacher day that was scheduled to be August 15th, but we'd actually like to move that to August 9th, which gives a couple more days of buffer for new teachers. So if you look at that calendar, it gives them an additional day in there that they could choose to work if they wanted to, or it gives them a little bit of time away from that start before they get to run up to the start of the school year. And again, that's guided by staff feedback. And then we have not approved the 2021 calendar at this time. You may recall that we had brought the 2021 calendar when we asked for approval of 1920. We received a fair amount of feedback, especially from staff, about some concerns related to that calendar. So we went back, we've worked with CRE leadership through that conversation. And one of the things we changed is the workshop days at the start of the year will be four days and not five days. And then really the conversations centered around progress reporting days. We typically have a progress reporting day in April, but because of when this all falls together in that calendar, what we're actually presenting is that the progress reporting days be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before winter break, January 18th and February 22nd. And so what that does is it shifts those a little bit, but it allows some flexibility around Thanksgiving and around winter break. So, all guided by feedback we received since we first put that 2021 calendar out. So those are the recommended changes across those three calendars that are before you this evening. And with that, I think we could go into the...
The public.
Yep.
This is the public hearing for the amended school calendar for 2018-19, 2019-20, and 2020-2021. I think I got those all correct. Laurel, have you received any correspondence at all?
I have received no correspondence with regards to any of the calendars.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? If not, we will now close the public hearing and proceed with our agenda. Next up, we have a report from Dr. Buck, our superintendent.
All right, thank you. "Our students and staff have been working really hard to continue the momentum of positive and effective learning opportunities despite this nutty weather. For instance, Franklin Middle School held a fantastic event last Friday, their first ever Day of We, which involved more than 30 community members who are leaders in their professions. I had the honor of kicking things off of the keynote address to the students before they dispersed for breakout sessions where community members spoke to students about their career paths and personal triumphs. Kevin BF Burt capped off the day with a special performance for the students. It was a wonderful opportunity to spotlight the profile of a graduate in the context of career exploration and invite students to be inspired and energized by the possibilities of various professional pathways guided by their passions." So it was a really great day. I would say this in my keynote, I tried to give a grounding point related to video games and how video games have changed sort of over time, and I think I got the biggest murmur in the crowd when I said Fortnite. So, there you go. So hopefully I made a difference beyond Fortnite, but we'll see. But it was really, really amazing event, and so thankful for community leaders coming in and working with our students. Our magnet school lottery is open, and community members are invited to visit the CRCSD website at www.c-r.k12.iu.us for details about each magnet school. The application and lottery information, school visit dates, and school contact information are located there. Online applications for the magnet school lottery are being accepted until March 8th at 11:59 p.m. And as you know, we're excited to add McKinley Middle School and Taylor Elementary as new magnet schools in the fall. The Lynn County, this is tomorrow, the Lynn County STEM Festival will be held February 26th from 4 to 7 at the Kirkwood Lynn County Regional Center up in Hiawatha. The goal of the festival is to nurture interests of children and families in the exciting fields of science, technology, engineering, and math, of course STEM. This day will feature compelling educational and entertaining activities, performances, and exhibits to boost children's interest in STEM. Activities will be developed and presented by STEM experts from business, higher education, community organizations, and informal education venues. This event is one of many that we appreciate our students having the opportunity to participate in as they consider professional pathways. Rebecca Warfield, a first-year student at Kennedy High School in Cedar Rapids, has been chosen as the winner of the 2019 Corridor Jazz Project CD Cover Design. That's that there. Rebecca will receive $100 cash prize from KCC KFM. Her design will serve as the cover of the Corridor Jazz Project 12, a compilation of recordings from the top jazz bands from Jefferson, Kennedy, Prairie Xavier, and Washington High Schools in Cedar Rapids, Lindmar and Marion in Marion, Iowa City High, Iowa City West, and Liberty High School, as well as Soul and Mount Vernon in Lisbon. Rebecca's original piece, and those receiving honorable mention, including seven Cedar Rapids students, will all be exhibited during the Corridor Jazz Project Concert, March 5th at the Paramount Theater in Cedar Rapids. Thank you to all the teachers who presented this opportunity to our students. The Cedar Rapids Community District Foundation is gearing up for their million-dollar celebration and special announcement event on March 8th at 7:30 a.m. here at the LSC. As always, we're thankful for the foundation's support, and I look forward to attending that event to celebrate the efforts of our foundation. Finally, I was able to attend Schooled, hosted by Kennedy High School, two weeks ago, and several of our staff members delivered compelling talks with topics ranging from effective approaches to teaching social studies, to the role of mental toughness in extracurriculars and academics. The next Schooled event will be held on March 13th at the Whipple Auditorium in the Cedar Rapids Library. These TED-style talks are with local educators to discuss and engage in topics of interest to local community members. At that event, we'll hear from McKinley counselor Lauren Sacara, Carlos Grant on the beauty and burden of being a servant leader, John Rice on how and why he decided to sell most of his possessions, strap on a backpack and travel abroad for a year, and what he learned through that experience, and Metro language arts teacher Mary Bardslay on theater programming in the alternative setting and how transformative telling your own story can be. So I would say this, if you've not taken, these segments are on our website, and if you want to get a flavor for the work that's been underway with the Schooled events, it's worth going to the website and taking a peek. I have enjoyed them all. There's a couple that I've especially enjoyed, if you want to take a peek. One of them is the nutrition lead at Metro. If you want to take a look at hers, it's really great. And an English, is it social, is Ben's social studies at Metro?
Yes.
Language arts, yes. So there's language, anyway, they're really cool. It's worth your time to go visit the website and take a peek at what we're doing with Schooled. And that's also, when you think about our bold strategic plan, one of those is about story. And when we think about ways to differently engage our community around our story, Schooled is a work in that regard. So, good stuff.
Thank you. Any board reports?
Yep. I was able to visit two schools, which is one of my favorite things to do. I visited Kennedy High School and Grant Elementary School. Asked each school for two items to share. Jason Klein at Kennedy shared that Kennedy has a fun elective called Electric Car Program, allowing for project-based learning in design, building, physics, math, and engineering, and the program attracts a wide variety of students and all have an equal voice. Collaboration is a must. Additionally, Kennedy has many pathways for students to become future-ready. Not all pathways are through advanced placement. Kennedy builds community around, including all kids. Kennedy High School has students involved in Iowa-Big Kirkwood Academy and career-centered electives. And then at Grant Elementary School, met with Monica Frye, who's the principal there, and Principal Frye is proud of the hardworking staff of Grant. Many stay late and ask to meet on weekends so they can continue to plan together. Teachers do provide home visits. All teachers encourage moderate ID students and behavior-focused students to be included. The staff has included trauma-informed instruction training so they can best meet their students where they are at. The second point is that Grant also has a lot of innovative instruction. They've developed pods of multi-age grades that allow them to continue focusing on grade standards while adjusting so individualization can occur. Additionally, innovation in their Spark Days is available on Friday when teachers or community members who are content experts provide a five-week small group exploration of an area students identify as an interest. That's all.
Raphael.
Kind of piggyback on what Dr. Buck said, I had the opportunity to participate in the Day of We at Franklin Middle School, and it was an opportunity for students to have the choice to be able to personalize the learning for that particular day, and to be able to hear from high school students in our district that have done things like publish, that are published authors, to hear from staff, to hear from community members that are involved in the trades, arts, music, local and state leaders, including our own Director Humbles. I think she had a session and presented, heard good stuff. We even had retired teachers in our district that attended. So I heard lots of good stuff from students, lots of good stuff from those that participated, and I just wanted to commend Principal Patachik and the staff and the coordination, or the staff that coordinated that entire event. In fact, I was asked to deliver some handwritten thank-yous from students. So those that participated included Noreen, Rod, Dr. Grant, Nancy, and Aqui. So these are all from the students. I have them just for you guys, so this evening I'll get them to you. But great event. Would love to see something like that expand to more of our schools in the district.
Any other reports?
I had a chance yesterday, I know Jennifer Borcharding and Nancy Humbles helped lead it, but there was a program that the local NAACP and our Cedar Rapids Education Association and I'm sure somebody else...
The African-American Museum.
African-American Museum helped sponsor it. It was called Not Without Me: Interfacing with the Education Process. And a number of folks from around the community came together. Dr. Buck was there, Noreen spoke, I saw Rod Dooley, and I'm sure there were others from the district involved with that, which was a great conversation. And again, I think bringing people together and talking about those things was a great thing. So I just, you know, as I was sitting there, I did a lot of listening. As a board member, I didn't do a whole lot of talking, but listening to it. Some great ideas, but some of the ideas, I just want to make sure that as a board, as we hear about these ideas and things, that we're also thinking about the students, not just African-American students in our community, but those that are just generally in poverty, Hispanic, LGBTQ, students on IEPs. I know as a board, we do a lot of work on that. So it was a great conversation. I think that there's a lot of forward momentum, but again, just for us, keeping in mind too, that there's the broader work that we're all doing, so.
Oh, sorry, Gary.
President Humbles, this isn't going to be an ongoing series, right?
Yes.
So do you want to...
Next meeting, March 24th, and it will run through October. So we will meet the fourth Sunday of each month at 1:30 at the African-American Museum.
And I just have one thing, Nancy, a separate thing, but like school, some additional opportunities for our students have been delayed because of the weather, but I know that a lot of students were finally able to get in their workplace learning experience where they went out to the community and got to shadow some professionals. And I've spoken with a couple of students, and they were surprisingly impressed, I should say, with the experience. They didn't know what to expect going into it, and had some really great experiences, some with Transamerica, where the employees even would test their theories and explain to them why it didn't work, or what was good about that. So I want to take the opportunity, I think I speak for the board, to thank our community for partnering and allowing our students to come in and do that as well. And thankfully, the weather allowed them to get that in.
Any other reports? Okay, thank you. Next, we will go to communications delegations and petitions. And I'd like to remind those who have requested to address the board to step up to the podium when your name is called, and please state your name, address for record. And you will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as a timer and inform you when your time is up. The first request is Lawrence
Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Morel Road, Northeast. First, I'd like to thank David Nicholson and John Galbraith. I met with them on Friday regarding my concerns about Kingsum Stadium, and it's a very exciting project. They explained to me what was happening, so I understood. And it's something that, unlike roofs and parking lots, I think that's something that would benefit the whole community when we have these things, types of things come up on public hearings. You know, it's not just the people in the room here that's a part of this, but there's sometimes over 150 people watching this afterwards. And I have some ideas of different ways of presenting that, so President Humbles, if you'd like to talk to me about it, I'd be happy to. Main reason for coming here is, when I think of the employees of our district, I like to think of them all as equal. No one is better than anyone else, whether you're the superintendent, a principal, a teacher, or the person working in a lunch line. Everyone is equal. Granted, some people have more value than others, but everyone's equal. And I think the policies for the people should be equal, and that we should not, you know, and the value of the people is with their salaries. The fact that some, I guess my understanding is that there's also some laws that protect some of the professional people who work within our community, and that, which is, you know, something we can't control. But the whole idea that we're coming up to this contract negotiation and that, again, anything beyond salaries, which is what the state gives us, I think is wrong. Because, once again, everybody's equal. We should have one section of our policy manuals that covers all employees. There should be no exceptions. And I think the first thing that should be as part of the policy is that students are first. Well, as much as I respect all of the people who work here, unfortunately, there's a few people, like in every business, who put their contract above the students. And the students have no way to retaliate. I can't tell you the number of times I've talked to administrators and principals, and they said, "We're sorry, it's all in their contract. There's nothing we can do." You know, they don't have to meet with a student, Annette, as long as they're, you know, if a student, as long as they put their seven and a half hours in for the day. So, that's something I think that needs to be addressed. The other thing is, we go back when we had that little issue over at Washington High School. I think I was offended, and I think a lot of people were offended. You know, some people started playing the lawyer game. "Oh, I was illegally or inappropriately dismissed and lost my job." And they should have used, I think they should have had a lawyer, but I think it should have been with the district attorney, but, you know, that's sort of a different story. But I think we need some sort of employment agreements or contracts for all employees, so that people can't just try to leverage their position and their money against the school district, because we don't have deep pockets. And to a point, we have to give in, and we don't have no alternative ways of handling this. And, you know, so that's sort of what I wanted to talk about, was pretty much, you know, these contract negotiations, let's keep them simple, talk about salaries, and not waste a lot of people's times, because there's other things we can do. And besides, you know, one thing we do do, we ask people for, all the employees, for their input. Calendar's a prime example how we went out and reached out for them. It's all over the place, you know, and if it's done correctly, you know, we don't, you shouldn't have to have unions, Annette. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tanya Johnson.
Tanya Johnson, 3816 Riverside Drive, Northeast, president of the Cedar Rapids Education Association. I just want to remind people, in case they didn't have the chance to watch last time's board meeting, that the Cedar Rapids Association and teachers appreciate the input that they were able to give for the makeup days, so the new 2018-19 calendar that we're looking at tonight, and then also that we were able to slow down the process just a little bit for the 2021 calendar, and have some input on that as well, which actually worked out great, because then we were able to add some snow days and inclement weather days in there as well. So, again, appreciate always being at the table and having an opportunity to voice our opinions and have that dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. As part of the consent agenda, do any board members have any items they would like to pull for separate discussion or voting consideration?
I have a, would like some discussion about BA 19259, the purchase of Chromebooks. I just have some questions. I'm not sure it has to be pulled for a separate vote.
Anyone here to speak on that? Noreen, can you speak first?
Well, Noreen, perhaps, but yeah, we don't have Craig here.
Okay. I think Noreen probably can answer this. I'm not real versed on Chromebooks, but what little I know is it seems that one of the things are that a lot of the software is cloud-based, if I'm not mistaken. So my question, and maybe possibly concern is, as we distribute these to students in use, will they be able to, can you store information on them? Will they be able to do, in other words, if they have work they've done at school, during the school, and have connection to the web, can they continue at home offline if they didn't have access to the internet?
That is an excellent question, so I'm going to back up just a little bit.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Is that better?
That's better.
So, we went through a process this fall with our learning plan or technology plan in regards to, first and foremost was our student information system, then was a discussion around our cloud services. Our current cloud service is with Office 365 and Microsoft, and we used kind of a test case with student input through multiple environments throughout our system, as well as a study with teachers, doing some comparative metrics in order to guide our decision. We had a task force along the way with all of that input, so we had student input, staff input, which then brought forth the decision to move to a different cloud-based service that was very much based on student learning metrics. Hence, Google was recommended by students and staff to be our cloud-based services, which is different than, well, there are some, Office 365 is a cloud-based service as well, but based on what students' feedback was, the accessibility with Google was their preference for their learning environment, especially around collaboration. That said, that drove the decision around the device. One was the budget and what we would be able to purchase for all of our kids as we move forward. And secondly, always in the back of our mind was access and equity. So as you've generated here around access beyond our four walls of all of our schools, what could we possibly do? Very happy to say that we have an opportunity that our Director of Technology, Lori Bruzak, was able to write for a grant that is going to allow us to purchase devices, hotspot-like devices, for distribution to our families that are generated with the greatest need. But in addition to that, even though we may not have enough for all families, we have maybe some other partners that are willing to engage in that conversation. There are ways in which to access or store some information on the Chromebooks. However, you're absolutely right, most of that will be cloud-based. So this does impact instruction and how we're doing our work, so we do want to be sensitive about that and how kids are able to access work from home and at school. We still will have opportunity for not just digital work, but also traditional formats as well. So especially as we gradually embrace this process, it will not be just an "or" environment. We will have an "and" environment. How is digital access enhancing learning? But we'll still probably have some generations of paper and pencil, too, especially as we gradually get through this process, so.
Noreen, is it a possibility, do these, I'm assuming, that these Chromebooks have a USB that could, for an external flash drive, so if, for some reason, we ran out of hotspots, the student could download the necessary material onto that flash drive, or so that they could access it at home?
Well, and I should say, I can't answer that specific enough question about the device, but yes, I think most of the devices that we explored had that capability to have.
They don't have the drive, most of them have the, I mean... Have the capability for a flash, if not a disk drive?
Yes.
So, so that is another option, is that they would, could have that information preloaded down onto the flash?
Much of the feedback that the students were providing, even if they don't have Wi-Fi access in their home, they're telling us that they are getting access on their phones for many things. And so also teaching our students how to access things through more than one device when it comes to providing feedback or getting their homework completed outside of our environment. That's true now.
Noreen, thank you so much for the information. It looks like it was very thought out, thorough, and you were ahead of the game thinking about that, and I understand...
I have to give credit to the digital literacy department. I just supported their work. I didn't really do a lot of that stuff.
Talking as a system as a whole.
Yeah.
And understand the fact that how, I've done some pricing, how much cheaper the Chromebooks are than your other devices, so it allows us to...
And they've come a long way. Those devices have come really a long way through the years, and so we're excited about the access for all kids.
And I appreciate the grants being written and looking at further, further ways of accessing. So thank you very much. I hope I didn't plan on catching anybody off guard. I appreciate the input.
Happy to respond.
Any other questions, anything else to be pulled? We will do a roll call due to the personnel report. We will do a roll call due to the personnel report.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Next, we move into administration, the Coolidge Elementary School Architect Decision. Dr. Buck, do you...
Yeah, thanks, President Humble. So, just a little bit of framing to remind folks of how we got here tonight in terms of this process. So, you'll remember that in November, the Board gave us initial guidance to move forward with the Coolidge Architect selection process, and that's really, conceptually, in line with the SAVE, the penny, the SAVE penny. Were it to pass in this legislative session, we want to be situated such that, not if, but hopefully when that penny passes, that we'll be ready to go with Coolidge. So, that guidance began in November. In December, we put a timeline for the process for the RFP in front of the Board, so the Board had an opportunity to review that and provide feedback. That got the RFP process rolling, I think, in late December. We put together an Architect Selection Committee, and interviews occurred in January, and from that process, three firms emerged, and those three firms presented at our previous board meeting. So, in addition to the Board hearing those presentations, also have had an opportunity to look at the notebooks with the documents that were provided, and we also thought it might be helpful tonight to have a couple representatives from the Architect Selection Committee here to just talk a little bit about their experiences that relates to this process. So, tonight, we have Janelle McGovern and Gary Becker, and I think Janelle, where did Janelle go? There she is, Janelle's going to go, I got a little panicky there, Janelle, I thought maybe, yeah. So, they'd just like to talk to us a little bit about their experiences with this process, too. So, with that, Janelle, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Janelle McGovern, I live in Cedar Rapids at 2207 Fox Trail Drive Northeast, and I would like to begin by thanking the School Board and Administration for the opportunity to participate in this process, to select an architect for our new elementary school. I found the process to be well-organized, and we, as a committee, were provided an opportunity to review the architectural RFP responses, allowing us to prepare prior to the interview presentations. I found the committee discussion and follow-up questions to be thoughtful and insightful, and I also appreciated the panel's diversity, because it brought many unique perspectives to the table. OPN stood out to me among the architects that presented to our committee. The team they put together for this project is not only qualified, but passionate about our schools and our community, and that was evident to me throughout their entire presentation. Their willingness to do pre-Save planning work at their own expense demonstrated to me their investment in this project. Examples of the work their firm has done outside of school buildings include the downtown library and Green Square Park, Hampshire Auditorium, Paramount Theater, and these are all easily recognizable as cornerstones in our communities. They shared a series of school projects that they have been involved in, demonstrated an ability to design our school based on our community's needs and wants. This was a key component for me personally. I wanted the architect selected to collaborate with our community, to honor the neighborhoods that the school will serve, and to focus on our students, teachers, and staff. I know that there are many architects, including some that we interviewed, that could build a very good school for our district. But it is my belief that with the selection of OPN, we would have a group that does this and more, because I believe that they will work to create a school that enhances the unique qualities of our community for generations to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for...
Any questions at all from the Board?
But just that we have a second presenter, right?
Don't we have a second person?
Okay. I just wanted to let Janelle's up there.
I have a question, but I want to wait until you're...
Okay, oh, very good, all right. Thanks, Janelle. Sit tight, I think, is what he's made me stand for.
Don't leave.
Good evening, my name's Gary Becker, I am a Senior Vice President at Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust, I live at 5351 Wildright Court Southeast, and I, too, was pleased to be included in the process for the Architectural Selection Committee. I had previously served on the Master Planning Committee, so between my work at the bank, where I'm a commercial real estate lender, I have some expertise and knowledge of the process, and then having went through this architectural selection process, or I'm sorry, the Master Planning process, I had a vested interest in this, and deeply appreciate the chance to serve again as we review the firms. I'd like to congratulate Jonathan and his team on the Boodings and Ground Committee, they brought us six really highly qualified firms, and, you know, when I left the meeting that day, I think overriding thing I said is, we really can't lose. These are six firms that you can't go wrong, they had great expertise, they know what they're doing, they have a deep background in doing educational buildings, and, you know, we had nothing but high praise for all the six firms that came and talked to us that day. They all had great presentations, and in the end, like Janelle, I appreciated the diversity of the committee, there were certain, you know, you had principals, you had administrators, you had people out in the community like myself, and we all had a chance to have this debate and talk about, at the end, where we thought we landed. And that debate, I thought, was very enlightening, and it was, and it was well-thought-out. But like Janelle, I came to the same conclusion, both individually, as we graded the firms, I, too, landed on OPN as the one that I would recommend. When we went through the, you know, the summary of everyone's votes, they were the clear leader, I think they were, you know, probably 5% ahead on a scale of 100, they were five points ahead of the nearest, the nearest, the next competitor. I had great comfort with their expertise, they've obviously done this before, they had experience in our area doing school district, school buildings, their performance history is very, was very solid, they had a very good performance as far as their change order rate, important to a banker, like standard budget, and their fee, I thought, was at the low end of the range of the ones that participated, and we, you know, again, being a banker and accountant, I'm very cost-sensitive, and that was important to me. And then, I think, finally, they are local, and they're a known quantity, we know the kind of work that they do here, they're going to be very readily available during the process, I thought that was important, and in the end, I think those are the key factors why I landed on OPN. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, so, thank you.
So, in terms of the process, Gary, you talked about the committee, which I'm looking at the committee, we've, as you mentioned, we've got people from banking, we've got people from the district, we've got people from organized labor and the trades involved, we've got, just, again, people from a wide variety on there. So, was, did you individually look at these proposals, then, and rank them, or did you have discussions and then come up with your rankings?
No, so, we actually were given a grading sheet for each presenter, and after each presentation, we were instructed to fill it out. I think we learned something from the process last year, and I think Janelle and both, both and I participated in the selection committee for the general architect, and one of the things we found out is that we need to hear a few presentations first before we start grading, so we kind of get our curve in the right place. So, I, at least for me, I waited till about the third presentation before I even started filling any out, so I got about halfway through, but then that's when we kind of started, you know, filling out those grading sheets, and we did one for each firm, and then turned those in, and then they had a, they had a score sheet that they tracked all that.
Yeah, we took notes through presentations and things like that, but the presentations they gave us followed a series of questions, so that we could kind of keep track with that score, and then, it's interesting, because it's kind of like, well, I don't know, am I scoring, am I too kind, am I too, am I too harsh? But the thing is, for each individual, our perspective translated across every one of our presentations. So, where, if you looked at my scores and you looked at Gary's scores, they may not line up, but they were consistent for me, and then consistent for him, and...
Great, no, that helps, I was just trying to make sure there wasn't some sort of group think going on ahead of time, or, because as I look at some of the scores, it is pretty clear that there was some consistent themes.
I think that in our discussions after the fact, I think that the values that we placed that were important to us in making this decision were actually pretty consistent across the board, when we talked about what would be important to us as far as the impact on our community, the cost, the performance of the architect, I mean, I think that the desires that we had were all kind of similar, so I can see that that would be true.
Other questions?
Were the presentations similar? I don't know if you had a chance to see our last board meeting when they made the presentations here. Were the presentations that, do you know, that you, they made for your group similar to what we saw?
I did not get a chance to see what they presented to you, so I apologize for that. But I would tell you, they were each allotted an hour, they consistently used the entire hour, they were all very good. This is something that they obviously do very well, and they're very practiced at, they had good collateral materials that were handed out, they had PowerPoints, it was very, very organized, and I, again, I commend all of them, there wasn't a bad one in the lot, it was all well-done.
You don't need to apologize for not seeing the last meeting, we appreciate the time that you're giving up as donating to the community and your work. So, our presentations were limited to just a half an hour, so it sounded like you had a little bit more thorough presentation, and that's fine, just checking.
Another question, so this is sort of addressed to Dr. Buck, maybe, so this is selecting the architect for the Coolidge project, which is kind of the lead-off to this whole project, but this doesn't necessarily mean that this architect selected is the same architect that may work on a project later down the line, or does it...
Correct, so the Board, so, assuming we move forward with the Coolidge project, SAVE passes, as that unfolds, that timeline is about a year from now, we'll need to do something similar in terms of the selection of an architect, and so at that time, we'll be seeking Board direction on how you'd like to proceed next, which could include doing this process again, could certainly be a different architect firm, or could be the same, I mean, I don't want to say either one, but definitely we'll be seeking Board guidance on how you'd like to go forward from there.
Yep. I just have, have one more thing, I noticed, I'm sorry, but, this was important, back when I was President of the Board, we worked with the city on a memorandum of understanding, I know that you've included copies of that, and I just want to, again, make sure that we're clear that we are working through this Master Facilities Plan, this is one of the stages of that, but we have committed to working with the city and the neighborhoods in these particular schools in terms of what is important to them in these facilities, is that still accurate?
Yes, absolutely, so one of the things, by way of reminder, the presentations that were done to the Board at the last meeting, they were a little bit different from the ones that you guys heard with priorities from the Board, one of which was, and this actually crosses both groups, I guess, how are we going to engage the community as a primary driver in this conversation? So, once this, once a decision is made tonight, contracts finalized at the next board meeting, we'll be immediately beginning the conversation about what do those community inclusion groups look like, and starting to get them on calendars and included, with an eye towards SAVE and SAVE's passage, so there's, we're trying to get that to sort of fall together. And then, as part of that, we'll also talk to the architect firm selected and talk a little bit about experiences they've had with engaging with the city, and then I think our MOU calls for at least our first meeting to occur before July 1 of this year, so we'll get that process underway and start meeting with the city and talk about opportunities with Coolidge. Because if you remember that Coolidge site, the Coolidge site in that city block contains three baseball fields that the city owns, and so just talk a little bit about, is there an opportunity to amplify school and community experiences for our students and patrons through that process? So, yeah, we're ready to do it, it'll be, I'm hopeful, it's a pretty exciting opportunity to take advantage of tax dollars in a good way to even make better decisions, so.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and it's just to thank you so much for the time that you've invested in this. When you've said that meeting with six firms, and they each had an hour to present, that's a significant amount of time in addition to all the time that you've, I'm sure, thought about this. I know as Board members, we've also spent many hours reviewing presentations and looking at other sources of information, and absolutely very much appreciate the work that you've done for us, so thank you very much for that.
Same for me, too. Thank you so much, because I know this was a lot of work, and we truly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
John, do you have another question?
Oh.
I do.
Gary does.
Gary?
Again, this is, with the start of the process of hiring an architectural firm, again, this will start the planning process as far as community conversations, city conversations, design, but not the expenditure of actual construction until we see, or see, hopefully, the SAVE move forward, or determine an alternative funding source, so just wanted to make that clear, that this is just a start, but is, will not start the actual brick and mortar construction.
Right.
So, based on all of us having looked at this information, again, thanking the committee for all the work that you've put into it, certainly a wide array of people that know a lot more about architecture and buildings and finances and school issues than I certainly do in my profession, and knowing that all three of the architecture firms are quality firms that put together good proposals, I would like to make a proposal that we go ahead and move forward with the committee's recommendation of selecting OPN as the architect of choice for the Coolidge Architect Project.
I'll second that motion.
Do we require a roll call?
There would be time for discussion, since there's been a second to the motion.
Okay, discussion.
So, I would, again, like to echo my colleagues' comments on thanking the committee for taking the time to help us review this. I don't see any fatal flaws in the process, I don't, I don't have any objections, after all the material I've read, I agree with that recommendation, and feel very grateful for all, all the firms that replied to our RFP, and felt that all of them were very well-qualified, and thank them for their response and interest in our projects moving forward.
I would concur, want to thank the architectural firms that, not only the three that were brought forth, but I guess there were six initially, and appreciate them stepping forward. I concur with the OPN recommendation, and one of the strongest, for me, is the fact that they are local, and I, if at all possible, I like the idea of keeping our tax dollars within the community, so, besides all of the other things, but I truly appreciate excellent architecture firms that presented in their presentation.
Yeah, and I had the opportunity to, you know, review the materials that were made available, to review what the committee put together, a lot of time, energy, effort, and paying attention to those details, where they had six hours, it was condensed for us into, you know, an hour and a half. I'm also in agreement, I'm excited and optimistic at looking forward to this next step. I know a year and a half ago, or however long it was that we started the process, it seemed, you know, maybe we wouldn't actually get to this point where we're now actually getting started, so, that's what I'm excited about.
I, too, am in agreement with OPN as our architect.
I also would like to add that, just tremendously thankful and excited that there are so many qualified people that were involved, not only in the committee, but as architects, that really put thoughtfulness into this design and into these presentations, a lot of really great work by a lot of really great people. After having reviewed the committee recommendation and other materials, I would also agree with OPN being the architect that I would support.
Can you call it for a vote?
Yep. So, with the motion and a second and discussion, are you all ready to vote then at this point? Okay.
Yes.
So, then, we'll do a roll call vote, all right? Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
And President Humble's.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did I hear, then, we, at the next board meeting, will actually approve a formal contract, is that correct? Okay.
So, now that, now that it's OPN, we'll make sure that we have the i's dotted and t's crossed on the contract, and we'll have that in front of you in March.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into a work session. John Rice, we have an academic roadmap?
Yes, and this is the same guy that did the backpacking, but I think this roadmap's going to be different.
This is an information item. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, everyone. It is a, thank you for the introduction about selling all my possessions and living out of a backpack. That is still true. It's great, yeah, I recommend it. It's a story for another time, though. It's a pleasure to be here today and share with you our academic roadmap. Our academic roadmap has two parts, which I'll get into. One is our goals, our academic goals we want to accomplish by the year 2022, in line with our strategic plan. And then two is how we plan to get there. And so I will share those slides with you, if I can keep myself organized, which I think I can do. So, first, I should mention my name again. I don't need to mention that. I'll mention that I work in the instructional services department. I have the pleasure of leading a fantastic team. Our team does the following things: curriculum, assessments, professional learning, and communication. And my team is really awesome. Thrilled to be working with them. And when I came on board from Washington DC, after living in a backpack, I came to Cedar Rapids in the summer and got to know my team and got to know what they were looking for in terms of goals and vision as a team. I also spend a lot of time talking to our teachers, visiting our schools, talking with school leaders, our district office, getting as wide a feedback as possible about what direction we should take in terms of our teaching and learning processes. We also did a survey on August 20th where we got 2,200 responses back from our teachers about what they're hoping to accomplish with our teaching and learning in our curriculum office. And so we took all those things together and put a plan in place that would try to meet the needs that those folks laid out and that would also support our schools. So if you look on this page, I just want to mention, part of the reason we even have goals and a roadmap is to help make sure that we know how we're making progress on our mission of every learner being future-ready. When I asked my team members how they had been successful in previous years, they said, "We did a lot of good stuff." And that was true, they did do a lot of good stuff. But I said, "Are we getting closer to our goal of being future-ready?" And they said, "I think so, but I'm not exactly sure." And so I wanted to put a little more qualitative and quantitative measures in place that we could help make sure, and at least in the instructional services department, that we were reaching those goals. We also wanted to provide schools, the ELSC teams, and the community with a clear cohesive set of goals that they could know that we were aiming for. When they say, "What are we doing with standards-based grading? What are we doing with our curriculum? What are we doing with a new benchmark assessment?" We can now answer those questions with a timeline and with goals that are more clear. In my conversations with schools and school leaders, clarity was one of the biggest things they had asked for from my office and wanting to know when things were happening and how they could best fit into that. And so providing a roadmap gave them some security about when and how things were happening. I should also mention, this academic roadmap has been shared with all of our principals at this point, but one opportunity for the board to have feedback as well. And last, we want to focus the resources of our instructional services team on very specific outcomes. If we don't set a few kind of goals, we could easily kind of diverge and do lots of different things which aren't necessarily in service of our goals of every learner being future-ready. So with that background, I'm going to share our four goals. These four goals are in line with ESA as well, so that schools don't feel there's a discombobulation of what we're hoping to achieve with schools and with our academic office. Our first goal is around student growth. Student growth is super important. It's actually the largest percentage of the pie in terms of ESA designations. And when we looked at our Iowa assessment results over the last five years, around 50% of students each year meet growth, which means about 50% of our students aren't meeting growth. And so we want to improve that number to get towards 70% at least over the next four years. I would love for it to be interactive, yes. That would help me not be nervous, so please.
Don't be nervous. Why wouldn't we shoot for 100% of students meeting growth goals?
That's a great question. One, I'm not super confident in the way growth is measured with Iowa Assessment. We worked with our data analysts here in the office. And some students may have a goal of getting 18 points in a single year, where the kid sitting next to them has a goal of getting five points on Iowa Assessment growth. And so the way the growth is calculated, I think, is really challenging. And we have a new assessment this year that's not necessarily going to be tightly correlated to the previous years. So I want to give it a little more time before we say for sure that this is the best way to measure growth. I should mention, some of these goals may change. We may change the numbers, we may change the metrics based on how the new assessment looks. Should we ultimately have 100% of students showing growth? Yes, absolutely.
I'll be honest with you, I'm uncomfortable that we're not expecting that now. I just want to put that of record. We've always expected our students to have one year of growth. I don't know if that's the only measurement that we're using to gauge that growth or not.
Yeah, that's awesome feedback, thank you.
Well, I would just say that I agree with you on the 70% and wonder even if realistic. With the new assessment, I just have this gut feeling that we're going to see a possible dive in scores, let's say, because of the new assessment and how it's given and a whole slew of things. So, and nobody has seen the assessment yet, it hasn't been normed, so we've got to wait. So I appreciate your, the other, the question is, are those, when you say 50%, is that district or is that state?
That is Cedar Rapids.
That's Cedar Rapids, thank you.
And each of the four goals, it looks like we're already on the second one, apologize for that. Each of the four goals we established were done not by just pulling a number out of a hat, but looking at the past five years' worth of scores and figuring out what might be a realistic target. I do think maybe being a little more aspirational would be appropriate, too. The second goal is around student proficiency. Again, this was a goal that we normed with our past five years of scores. Our scores are around 70% proficiency on average and have been so since about the 14, 15 school year. We would like them to be at least 80%, having at least 80% of students being proficient or advanced in reading, math, and science. To get there, that would be about a 3% improvement per year, each of the next few years, barring, is Mr. Gary An?
Anhalt.
Anhalt, thank you. Anhalt mentioned barring a significant change in proficiency scores with the new assessment. The third goal is around our advanced students. We'd like to see twice as many students scoring advanced on reading, math, and science from the 17, 18 school year to the 21, 22 school year. And that is the end number that we would take to get there for each of those groups. We currently do an outstanding job of getting students to advance, but I think we can certainly raise the rigor there. Our fourth goal is our equity goal, and I wanted to preface it with two slides from NAP. If you're not familiar with NAP, NAP is codenamed the Nation's Report Card. And it shows something that's done every two years on odd number of years, so we'll do a spring assessment soon. And it's assessing fourth grade math and fourth grade reading, and it assesses eighth grade math and eighth grade reading. And like I said, done every two years. So this is the most recent fourth grade reading scores from 2017. If you'll notice, the red line there is the national average. And Iowa is slightly to the right of that, about four bars over. And we are smack in the middle of the country in terms of fourth grade reading. There's actually 52, oops, time's up. You want me to keep going? I timed myself, okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm stuck, I'm stuck.
Okay, we probably should say this on the record, his mentor is seated at this table.
We'll allow you to finish it up.
Thank you, thank you. So Iowa's about average in terms of our fourth grade reading scores when you look at the state level and you look at average student performance. The next slide, and by the way, I should mention, our scores are about the same as they were in 1992, about a 222 on the scale. Haven't really budged since the early 90s as a state. The next slide is how our fourth grade students in Iowa are doing that are African-American. I don't know if you can find where Iowa is on this bar chart.
Oh, yes, way over there.
Dead last. And not even close to be quite as. So this, to me, is a call to action. This is something that has to be front and center. It's already front and center, but we've shared this with teachers. Teachers were shocked when they saw this chart and also felt a fire being lit to know that they need to make improvements, we need to make improvements collectively in this area. So that is the framing for our fourth goal, which is our equity goal. And it's really to decrease the gaps in proficient advanced rates by race, LL status, and IEP status. I noticed that I have 25% there, but I also have 20%, so that's something that we also can kind of go back and forth on. This one was a hard one to kind of nail down of exactly what the numbers are, but we think reducing the gaps by 25% over each year, or 20%, may be an appropriate and attainable way to close the gap by 2022. So those are the four goals, yes, sir.
So John, those are growth goals or those overall score increase goals?
Those are proficiency goals. So the number of students in those categories showing proficient.
So it was interesting, as we've been having these conversations in higher education as diversity, a lot of students, first-generation kids, kids in poverty coming into higher education. I just had a faculty member in public health who thinks about things on a, you know, a large scale in terms of the whole demographics of the country. And they said, "If you spend all of your time and energy focused on that bot," it's a bell curve, right? So what we're talking about is a big bell curve. If you spend all of your time and effort on the far left, where we have a lot of issues, if you spend all of your time on the top of the curve, the really amazing academic students that are off the charts, and you kind of forget about that big group in the middle, you're never going to raise this proficiency for everyone. And they sort of tied it to thinking about healthcare and trying to improve the population's health. And that made me think, you know, we do spend a lot of time and effort, and rightfully so, on trying to help all students. We spend an inordinate amount of time, I think, in many ways, on some of those ends. And just being a parent in the district for years, hearing parents ask the question, "What about my kid that's in the middle?" Are we doing enough to, and thinking about how we raise all of those kids, especially that big group in the middle?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think if I'm going to, I'll go back to our first slide, the student growth slide. When we look at student growth, it's often our students that are proficient that are not being sufficiently encouraged to grow in their proficiency. So we are not necessarily reaching all students. There are schools that you'd be surprised that are scoring below 50% in terms of their students showing growth. And I think partly for those reasons. So I think our office is going to be focused on improving core instruction and making sure our core instruction is at the grade-level standards and making sure that everyone is accessing that grade-level content with its great core instruction. And I think that's going to help raise all boats as opposed to doing targeted direct instruction towards some people and missing other groups, so.
Well, and in tandem with that, is it Goal Three? So one of the reasons why Goal Three is as important as it is is because the Goal Three is about driving students who are currently proficient into advanced. So it's keeping an eye on moving kids to proficiency, but it's also an eye in the conversation on making sure that proficient kids are being driven towards advanced status, too. So that's one of the reasons, that's great, yep.
And Goal Three was one that teachers were very pleased to see because they felt like that was often a forgotten group, pushing students towards those higher levels. Great question so far. Can I run yet? Got a couple more? Just kidding. All right, so I mentioned our four goals. And I just briefly want to mention how we're currently scoping out how we're going to get there. And so we've broken up the next four years' worth of work into themes that are tied to our high reliability schools framework and goals there. And we've given our folks something to aim at. So the first four slides are really about student outcomes. We want each of those goals, our student-focused, and helping our students grow, be proficient, close the gap. These are really about the teacher moves and the district moves in our office we're going to use to get there. And so this year, the 18, 19 school years, we're focusing on accessing, excuse me, focused on access to our guaranteed viable curriculum. There were some curricular areas that were weaker than others that we needed to shore up. There were some that needed to be cleaned up and clarified, others where we needed to just push the accelerator down a little more. And so this year's been focused on that and improving access to those materials with our students and teachers. Next year, our focuses are really going to be around assessment for learning, making sure that the assessments we have are aligned, that they tie into the Iowa, the new ISASP, and that our benchmark assessments and unit assessments actually look similar to those items so that students are having a unified experience with their assessments, not taking questions and items that don't match at all. Third, we're going to focus on student-empowered instruction. By that school year, our middle schools and high schools will all have Chromebooks and other devices that will be able to be in the driver's seat more of their learning. And then finally, by the 21, 22 school year, we want to get to a standards-based grading system. All of our elementary schools and five of our six middle schools are currently at that place. And so it's growing through the matriculation in the system. And I think we can continue to guide our folks towards a common definition by that timeline. So hopefully that clarifies a little bit what we're thinking in terms of our academics over the next few years. Happy to take any other questions, if we have any. Softballs preferred.
This was great information. I think it supports what we've been talking about for many years, so.
Awesome. Thanks for the opportunity.
I would like to see some aspirational goals in this plan.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Rod Dooley talk about behavior supports and student, he'll give us a student safety update.
Well, thank you, Board. It's, wow, how do I follow that? Maybe I should set a timer for only three minutes on this topic. We are excited to have, I'm trying to get to, I've got the presentation, there we go. Okay, and I'm going to have Eric, Chuck, and Adam come up. And they're going to actually share in this presentation. And what we want to do today is give you an update of where we are around supporting student behavior and making sure that we have safe environments for students, staff, and families. But all of this is grounded in our vision, making sure that every learner is future-ready and making sure that we support all learners in their personalized learning and making sure that they have a plan, a pathway, and a passion, and realizing that the social and emotional component of their learning is important as well. So last year, we had stood up the Culture Climate Transformation Department. One of our biggest focuses here was on making sure that we were looking at the school improvement system and putting things in place to bring transformation around that, making sure that all staff is empowered to really do what we need to do to bring and to drive equity throughout the system. We introduced the High Reliability School Framework last year, and it has five levels. And we believe that if, when we really realize this future state, then we will realize equity throughout the entire system. But we're just getting started. We started year one focused on that first level of safe and collaborative culture. So in that, our focus was on building the MTSS structures in each of the buildings, multi-tier support systems. We established high reliability schools teams in those buildings, tier teams. And you're going to hear more about the different levels in MTSS and professional learning communities that really actually begin to discuss how students are doing, not just on the academic, but also on the social and emotional. We also focused on intercultural mindset development. We wanted to make sure that we're providing those learning opportunities for our staff as they engage with students from different cultures and backgrounds. So some of the facts. Through the High Reliability Schools Framework, we assess our different stakeholder groups to get feedback on what their experience is. And now this assessment was, again, on Level One, that safe and supportive and collaborative culture. So safe and orderly environment. You can see, for the most part, our students and teachers and administrators, staff, felt that our environments are safe. There's always room for improvement here, but for the most part, the feedback was, we have safe environments. We do have it broken down by the different buildings as well, but overall, that was the feedback. Major office referrals. You can see that 30% of buildings have seen a reduction from last year, but we have a lot more opportunity where we saw 70%. but we have a lot more opportunity where we saw 70% see an increase. So way more opportunity to continue to focus on behaviors. Suspensions, same kind of story. Some buildings did see a decrease, but some, a lot more saw increases. Support resources. So what are we doing to support our students and to support the staff? We have increased the number of support staff focused on behaviors in the buildings. We've also increased our mental health programs and supports in the buildings because we know that that's a key factor.
Rod, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I'm just curious, do, does every school use the same criteria for an office referral or a suspension? Is that consistently applied?
I would say that that's been some of the issue probably over the last two years is trying to narrow down and, and be very clear on what each of these things mean. What's a major office referral? What's a minor office referral? Even though I think that we have improved it, I think that there's still a lot of work to be done.
So do you meet with the schools individually to go over the process so there is consistency? Is that something you guys have to do?
It is work in progress. Each of us, and I, I work with Noreen to support the high schools. Adam works with Dr. Grant to support the middle schools. And Eric works with Valdozal to support elementary schools. So we're working together to really try to do a better job of helping define those.
So you talked, the last bullet point on there is increase in mental health supports. And consistently yesterday at our NAACP event, mental health, mental health, and it's just not our students. It's the families and the community. I mean, so much of what we're seeing in terms of behavioral issues are coming from the families, from the neighborhoods, from these issues. And so if we're increasing those supports, I'm thinking about the dollars. Where are those dollars coming from? From my understanding, the dollars for mental health supports in the community are through, a majority come through our county. So just thinking about are county board of supervisors involved in these discussions? Are these targeted dollars coming through federal or other sources that are outside of that? How are we getting that increase?
Well, a lot of them are coming from, so through our at-risk dollars, we provide.
Which are federal?
Which are federal, uh, state. And a lot of them are, are our own local dollars.
And I think, and I think part of what's happening is as we've continued to work closely with our local providers, they are working on, so they, they have access to kids in our schools and they use like Title 19 or they use other insurance. And so part of that gets paid for in that regard. So I would say this, this is a statewide issue. And so you may recall that the governor put together, or the legislation, I can't remember which, they put together that Blue Ribbon Panel. They've talked about children's mental health. I think in this session, we're going to see at least the governance structure get up. We don't have a comprehensive youth mental health system in Iowa. That's one of the things they've recognized. And so I think at minimum in this session, we're going to see some governance structures put into place and codified so that we actually do have a youth mental health structure in the state. I think they're going to probably base it sort of off of the regional model that exists for adults right now. The governor asked for $3 million in her budget for supports for teachers for identifying students with mental health needs. But the real key in Iowa is ultimately going to be, does Iowa step up and further fund, in particular, youth mental health at the level it probably, well, it does need to be funded in the state and it's not currently funded.
Are those state funds though, are, they're coming through the county supervisors, right? Or are they coming directly to the school district?
They do not, they do not flow directly through us.
They do not flow through.
So it's through the counties is my understanding. Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear to everyone because this seems to be one of the number one issues that we're facing. And unless the county board of supervisors through that state, money, unless they're involved in this discussion, we're not going to get very far because it's going to take a lot of money. Those are professional people, right?
Yes.
A lot of time and resources. So, sorry, I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, related to that soapbox, if I could just pivot off of it, because I hear you and I agree. One of the legislators was talking about considering adding an additional penny of state tax. And that additional penny of state tax, the first three eights would go to water quality, which I think is currently in code, is if we get start a new penny, the first three eights goes to water quality. But then the remaining five eights potentially would go to funding youth mental health in the state, which would be tens of millions of dollars. I mean, to me, that would be a legacy decision by our legislature to provide a healthy state. Yeah, it's, so I, yeah, with you.
It's great.
Yeah, yeah. See if we can get that to have.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. So Eric is going to talk a little bit more about just the standard programming that we have in place. Chuck is going to talk with us about some of the things that they're doing at Jefferson and some of the feedback that they're getting from that. And then Adam is actually going to show you the structure of supports around mental health.
Good evening, everyone. As Rod said, I'm going to take you through our current state of our MTSS standard programming that we're seeing in all our schools. I was just going to give you a short definition of MTSS. The state has a really long one. But basically what MTSS is, it's a decision-making framework of evidence-based practices for all students. So as you can see on our triangle here, I'll first want to, I first want to take you through the tier, the three tiers. And basically, tier one is where we're thinking 80% of the staff enrollment would be at the tier one level. You go to tier two, you're thinking if you can get to 15% or less that need the tier two supports. That's, that's what research is quoted as saying. And then tier three, basically 5% of your student enrollment who's maybe needing additional support at the tier three. So that's how we kind of balance the pyramid, 80, 15, 5. And so I guess what I do, I want to do is just take you through briefly the tier one. Tier one is universal. Tier one is something that we pride ourselves on in common expectations and procedures throughout the school. That is within the school set or within the classroom setting as well as in the non-classroom setting. Some of you, I'm sure, have heard of PBIS. That is a approach, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. The majority of our schools, if not all, are using PBIS to lay that foundation for universal expectations and student procedures. Chuck's going to come up in a few minutes and highlight something about safe and civil, some of the fantastic work that they're doing over at Jefferson. Social, emotional, behavioral curriculum, we do have one. It's K8. That's a tier one. That's part of the tier one process. What I'm most proud of is the teacher development piece that we're working on under tier one. It's something that, as a former principal, we would work hard at our building. But teachers, including principals, we really didn't have a good foundation of the specific strategies under teacher development. We adopted NASOT, New Art of Science of Teaching, goes along with the HRS. It is amazing to me to see the number of strategies for teachers that they can get their hands on under this realm. Things like student engagement strategies. We talk about them, but what are the strategies? Rules and procedures, relationship building, which we all talk about, and then high expectations for students when it comes to behavior. That is something that I've seen in buildings as I make my rounds in the elementary. Teachers are using that. It's part of the compendium that we talk about with New Art and Science of Teaching. So I'm excited about that. Kids that are doing well are at tier one. They, they might not need that additional boost. For those children or students that do need something a little bit different, we go to tier two. Rod mentioned in every building, there's a tier one team, a tier two team, and a tier three team. That's how kids are elevated up the process based on maybe some of the challenges that they're experiencing. Tier two, there's a lot of research-based things, CICO, check-in, check-out. That's a PBIS strategy, check and connect, some of the other things that we're doing in schools. This is, what I like about this framework is this isn't everything that schools do. There are schools that are being innovative, that are doing some other things, and it's really centered around relationship building. Because we all know, I'm not going to preach that tonight, but relationships are key, key with kids. Tier two, they're getting a little bit more individual attention or maybe some group support through the counselor, engagement specialist, what have you. And then if we're still having some challenges, maybe with a particular student, based on the school's framework of how they built their decision-making criteria, we might have to go up to tier three, and that's where we get a little bit more diagnostic. We are going to administer a functional behavior assessment, or FBA. We're going to put a BIP into place, Behavior Intervention Plan, for that particular student. All of those supports, as you can see on the right side, are supported by not only the principal, but behavior techs that we've included this year, who are being more proactive, engagement specialists in every secondary school and 16 elementary schools. We have learning support facilitators in all the secondary. And at least, and I'll repeat this, at least one third of the counselors' time is focused on this work. They have other duties. They have other assignments. But counselors are pivotal and critical to this, to this framework. And of course, we have SROs and Student Resource Officers in the high schools and two split between the middle schools. So that's current state of what we're trying to build. I came on board last year. Very proud that we have tier teams now in place. Not that we didn't before, but it's more intentional, and people are wrapping their minds around that. The challenge will be, in which I'm going, I'll defer to Adam in this presentation, is the mental health piece, like John said.
I have a question. The behavior technicians, what is their role when you say you have 19?
Yeah.
Exactly what, what are, what are they doing?
Good question. Behavior techs were designed to be more proactive. And so I can speak for the elementary piece, and there's our, and there's quite a few in the elementary, 19. We want the behavior techs, if kids are put on a tier two plan, or maybe a tier three plan, we want them to get in before the student escalates. We want them to check, build a relationship, check on them, look, review the plan with them, maybe in the morning, maybe at lunch, maybe in the afternoon, and really get that proactive piece. Teacher is critical, as we all know, but the support that some of our kiddos need for that proactive approach and maybe communicating with their parents and telling them how their day went, so on. But that's really the primary responsibility for behavior techs at the current state.
I have a follow-up with that. What is their, what's the requirements or training on the behavior techs?
Good question, Gary. They, they are getting a lot of training. Now, during blue dot days, which I know are going to be exhausted here a little bit due to our snow makeup, but they are coming down and working with Wendy's Department, Special Services, and they're getting training on de-escalation and strategies on how to motivate kids, writing plans at times. But it's more of that approach of when you see a student escalating, and what can you do? What are strategies to get them calm and get them back on track? So they are getting training. Is it enough? No training is ever enough, but they are getting it, especially during blue dot days.
Do any of them come in with any educational background, any degrees?
A number of them. We actually hired from places like Tanager, Four Oaks. So they were involved in working with some maybe at-risk kids at one point in their career.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Maybe one other point is that we have some certified behavior analysts who go through a lot of training in behavior, and they work hand in hand with them as they're providing their training as well as giving them insights into how to put plans together for students.
I have a, a question. Just, I just want to clarify. On that MTMS, MTSS standard programming, was that correct that you said not all schools practice each of the interventions?
I think, I can speak again for elementary. I think everybody understands the MTSS process and they have things set up. I think it varies on the degree of the evidence-based practices based on their context of their school.
Okay. I guess I, my concern with that comes that, I also had made a note that, that Mary had talked about that since our office referrals aren't consistent across our schools, and if we are not using the same programming in all of our schools for interventions, I'm concerned about when the data is compiled, that I'm looking at apples and oranges.
Right. Yeah. And I, I think, I can speak to this since I'm fairly fresh out of the building. Behavior is not black and white, it's gray. The way schools are identifying an office referral is we have behavior definitions that we gather from the state, but it's, a lot of it is mindset, and a lot of it is, is it a minor referral? Is it a major referral? And that is some, I'll be honest, that's sometimes subjective.
Sure.
Yeah. So, but you're right.
Eric, I think this looks great, and I'm really excited that we have a very prescribed system of interventions. I, as I think about teacher prep courses, what are, what are our colleges doing to help our teachers relate better to classroom management and mental health issues?
Great question, Mary. I did have the, it was another topic, but I was meeting with a local university here in town last week, and we were talking more about volunteerism and student teaching and field experience. But I, we talked about two things. One was the importance of teaching literacy. When we're getting our undergrads coming out and they want to join our system, what type of experiences do they have in teaching literacy? Second was the behavior piece, and I posed the question to this one university rep, and she just said, basic classroom management. I'm just speaking for one.
So I, I sit on a couple of the ed advisory boards. One is the University of Iowa's education team, as well as Kirkwood. And they are asking for more feedback from what we are experiencing as the practitioners. And so I, there is a shift to prepare their students for their first field experiences as well as their student teaching experiences. So I do think that our universities are asking for our feedback as well about how to prepare their students better for the environments in which they're going to be teaching. There, we're not there yet, but there are, elementary has required classroom management classes. That is not the case in the secondary system. It's much more content-based. And so there is a specific course at the University of Iowa that they now pronounce or has been there for quite some time about basic classroom management. But now they're asking about tier two, tier three systems as well.
So you brought it up, literacy instruction. What is, what is the common literacy instruction that's prevailing? Is it whole language? Is it phonetic?
Depends on the university.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, and what we would say is, our transition to letters and a scientific approach to teaching reading. So I, I totally respect the art of teaching. And I would also say, though, that in the case of reading, there is a slice of kids that it takes scientifically-based principles about teaching them reading. And we are working with colleges and universities to make sure, because when we give the letters training, one of the most frequent comments we hear from staff is, why didn't I learn this in my undergraduate training? Why didn't I get this level of scientific instruction as it relates to reading? So it, there's opportunity for growth with programs, and we're backfilling that through letters training in Cedar Rapids, so.
I don't want to, I don't want to shortchange the, the fact that the need of undergraduate work with classroom management, but I, I think some of the, some of the problems that we're seeing and the students we're dealing with go beyond just classroom management. That that isn't an end-all, to-be-all.
Well, we aren't to Adam's part yet, but I would say the colleges and universities are also talking about ACES and some of those concepts, different from they've talked about in the, to their credit. So I think that's, we're not to that part yet, but that, I think, is part of the conversation at universities too, so. I agree, Gary, meaning in agreement, yep.
Okay. Well, I'm going to introduce Chuck now. Chuck's coming to the podium to talk a little bit about a successful program under tier one.
Okay. So, thank you. It's nice to be here. So I'm just talking more nuts and bolts, application of our Highly Reliable Schools Framework, Section One. One of the things we've tried, and it fits underneath your pyramid, but we've done kind of three things. Two years ago, the district, based on this need to build relationships and have, you know, a safe, civil school, had groups from the high schools and the middle schools meet and get some training on safe and civil schools. So we brought a team of administrators and staff, and we got together and we worked on that topic. The first thing we did was walk and talk beyond time, which was just something about the hallways. And the thing that Safe and Civil Schools has us do is it's a 10 to 1 ratio of positive to corrective interactions with kids. Because again, it's about the relationship piece to change behavior. So we're trying to have teachers say as many positive things as we can. So that was kind of our first introduction. Then Then the next year came, and we had the, the HRS teams form, so we had this separate group of people working on that, and then we had the HRS team, which was working on essentially IPI and improved instruction. Almost all of those teachers that worked on the Safe and Civil Schools wanted to continue, so our team is bigger than we're supposed to have, but we have more teachers involved in our Highly Reliable Schools team because they're passionate about this work. So Start on Time is what I'm going to focus on here, which is about getting minutes of instruction back in the classroom, again, having some positive interactions with your kids. And so we started the school year with that. So I'm, I'm reporting second-term data, because third-term data probably won't come until about May, at the rate this is going. Anyway, so, so essentially, Start on Time and Safe and Civil Schools is an approach where it's, we used to look at, we have engagement specialists. You guys deal with attendance. Administrators, if they're really bad, you deal with them. Counselors, pull them in if they have issues at home or why they can't get there. But what it amounts to is that everyone in the building is involved. So teachers teach six out of the seven periods a day. On their free period, they give us the first five minutes, and they actually become hall sweepers. They help make sure after the bell rings, since I don't have a class, that any kid that's left in the hallways gets where they're supposed to be, and we have a check-in center. So what we do now is, and it sounds like rules and negative, but final bell rings, doors are locked and closed, nobody gets in, the teacher does not answer the door for the first 10 minutes, we will have adults deliver kids back to their classroom. And the teacher, when they close and lock the door, that's a great opportunity to say, "Thank you for being here on time, it's great, we're ready to get to work," and then they start working. Now, the kids that are late get taken to a sweep center, someone signs them in, and someone else will mark them tardy. The teacher just marks their class absent when they're in class, and they're ready to go, and they know that someone else will take care of the tardies for them. And then the person that's walking them to class is probably an engagement specialist, a counselor, a principal, possibly a teacher. And we're having a conversation about, you know, when we get to class, we're very quiet, we get in, get to your seat, get your stuff out. When the teacher has a moment, they'll come and, and get you caught up. And so the reason it works is because what teenager wants to have some adult escort them to class? I don't like that. That's the immediate negative feedback. But you're still having a, you're having a corrective conversation, but not a negative conversation. And before we did this, it was pretty much, kids would be two minutes late, five minutes late, 10 minutes late, depending on the teacher. Some teachers, you got your butt chewed, and I was never tardy to your class. Other teachers, they just, it didn't matter. So they, they could come 15 minutes late every day, and no one mattered. So the amount of minutes total lost in instruction was incredible, but we had no data way to show that. So right now, if you look at our kids, from second-quarter data, we have 1,468 students that take an average of 6.7 classes per day. On top of classes per day, they have a lunch period, so essentially, it's like 7.7 chances, okay? So every period of the day, you have a chance to be tardy. So our average daily attendance for second quarter was 92%. If you take the 6.7, you had 9,869 times a day where we could count a tardy, if you took every kid and their 6.7 periods, including lunch, of passing times. At 92%, that means there's 9,079 times that you could be tardy. Our average was 136 tardies per day, okay? So 136 tardies is 98.5% of the time kids are on time in our school, which is really good. Now, we have kids of low SES, they have lots of issues. I mean, you have homeless kids, you have all sorts of situations. You can't tell me they don't have trouble getting to school in the morning. So we kind of look, if you take the first-period data out of there, which is where they struggle and they don't have control over, the kid doesn't necessarily have control, we only have 64 tardies per day, once they're there. So that's, that's means 99.2% of the time our kids are on time. So the net result, though, is that we still have kids that don't come to school for the day, so we have attendance issues, but we dropped our absenteeism, unexcused absenteeism, by about a third, because there are kids that would cherry pick, "I ain't going to that math class. I hate math," okay? So they would hide in somewhere in the school, they would disappear, you know, and it was real as you do, because there was always a lot of movement. Now, we are really religious, you're in the hall, you have a pass, you're always there, you know? And we have, we traded in one of our facilitators for three security staffs, so they are sweeping after the teachers do that first-five-minute sweep. So it's very hard to disappear. So what has happened, the interactions with students, way more positive, not a lot of arguing. Occasionally, we have one, that would be your tier-two, where they get to talk to someone, get re-taught about why we don't argue about that, and possibly tier-three, where they get to talk to a principal about it if they're really arguing, but that rarely happens anymore, once they're trained. And so, excuse me, the goal was to have 90% of the staff trained on what to do, 90% of the staff implementing, and then, and then you should reach at least 90% of the kids responding, and we're well above those goals. So once you get one area, they say the hallway is the most important thing to get control of, less stuff, less problems in the hall, all sorts, I mean, talk about a culture-changing environment. If you walk around Jefferson, it feels completely different this year than it's felt in years past. It's a change, it's amazing. The teachers are very proud of it, they want it to continue. So what did I, what's my big takeaway? We're kind of, education, we all kind of want to do things our way, and I hear this consistency coming from the board, but when we all engage in the process of solving the problem, and we all communicate in a similar way to students, and we all follow through in a similar way, so that the kids have really consistent expectations, behaviors change. So we're, our next area was supposed to take on the next most challenging area. What do you think that would be for high school? Cell phones, okay? Then you worry about lunchrooms. I mean, the elementary lunchrooms comes next, but it's, okay, but what we're going to do and focus now, since we're going to a one-to-one rollout, is can we have it when the instruction time is going to be teacher-driven and not device-driven, where we have a consistent way of saying, "Laptop's down," and we all follow through, and we have, when we have to reteach that lesson, we have a consistent way. So our HRS team is now working on, the next common area is basically going to be our one-to-one usage, so we have a consistent message there. And so it will grow and grow and grow, but I think the teachers finally really understand that all of us doing things similarly can really change behavior. So that's what I see as a real success.
Chuck, would you give the anecdote of the number of students, how you rewarded them recently with the?
Okay. So we have daily announcements during the week where we give, we pull kids that met our tardy goals, which is five or fewer tardies in a quarter, and no unexcused absences, go on a hat, and there's like 1,100 and some students, then we draw candy bars and give, you know, we're supposed to do that healthy stuff. But we give candy bars out because it's a treat. We also then had 448 kids that qualified had zero tardies and zero unexcused absences during second quarter, and we gave them all free passes to a dance, and we had about 150 kids take advantage of that, so it was kind of nice. So we're trying to recognize in a positive way, things that kids are doing every day. And we also give out free passes to ballgames and things like that for kids. So each quarter, we rebundle a new group of kids, names that are succeeding, and, and again, we, we kind of forgive that first hour, because there's, we want to reward kids that are there and doing, and having choice versus those that had a tardy because they had no control over it. So it's been very, there's a lot of kids to reward, way more than I thought there would be. So we're very pleased with what's happening and where it can go. And then just one other comment on that. At the high school level, just my experience with new teachers and classroom management, Rick Smith Conscious Classroom Management is amazing. We do show that to a lot of our new teachers, but here's what I find, you, you show a few videos to our new teachers and try and get them, "I really want to watch this set," and it's a really very practical DVD set, and it's, it's amazing, it really works. But until they've been teaching for six, eight months and had their own classes and realize, "This is hard," that's just kind of doubt there. You really, I mean, when you student teach, you're still under someone else's training and control, and so you really got to have your own teachers, and there is a little bit of baptism by fire for new staff, but once they get in that a year, or a second-year teacher, they, they really get into it, so. So we're working on all those things.
This is great. I was just thinking about my, my own kids, just, you know, if, if we had mixed messages, if we weren't on the same page, or, you know, they would definitely take advantage of the situation. It sounds like that's sort of just on a bigger scale.
Yeah. It just, teachers are extremely pleased with the culture and the tone of our school, so stop by sometime and walk the halls at passing time and see how they clear out.
And other high schools are taking this on as well as?
I think Wash is just beginning that. We had McKinley sent two groups of people over to, to work, and they were trying to do some things with that, too. So I think, a lot of groups go through Safe and Civil, and, and implementation is at different stages in which one you chose, so we're having a lot of luck with, or a lot of success with Start on Time, and it's worth, it's worth looking at if you haven't, particularly at the high school level, and I assume middle school level, too.
Chuck, when we talk about consistency, what I've seen that consistently, schools that are successful have good leadership, and I think it's a key to, to their success. So I think the success of this program certainly comes from having a successful leader bringing forth and working with the staff and implementing the plan and having the, having the, the ability to carry through with it. So thank you for your work, and thank you for sharing.
Bet. Thank you.
I would just like to comment that I applaud whoseever decision it was to, to drop that first, first session, that first hour of being late to school, to fold those kids back into the rewards. I think that really speaks well to the equity that we're trying to account, establish in our schools and for our students, so great idea.
And that's our, that's our HRS team. Their, the teachers, they, they know our kids pretty well, and so their expectations are not out of this world. They're, they want our kids to succeed, and you can't, if it's impossible for the kid, there's no motivation, you know? And things are out of their control, so, so.
So one thing I was just going to add, so thanks for sharing your success story with us. I know as a board and working with Dr. Buck, we've always, you know, put that priority and consistency across the system, and seeing, you know, that this is being adopted at Wash. I happen to be doing a school visit and saw it in action, what they were doing, so I, you know, I'd have to check out Jefferson, but I would imagine it's much the same model, you know, the same way of working with kids. And I recall even hearing from principal client that when they made that decision, and even letting my kids know, they're like, "Oh yeah, we already heard about it from some other kids that were from Jeff, and they're at Wash," and they said it wasn't a big deal, as long as you were getting to class on time, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Kids, kids will step up to the expectations. Yep.
Thanks.
Good evening. I do have to stand up personal note, it's been a lot of fun to watch Chuck's team under his leadership work this plan a year ago. They came in, and the teachers really rallied around it, and it's been fun to watch the culture change happen. So I have the pleasure to talk about mental health, which we talked a little bit earlier. Similar to Eric, we have a three-tier system, tier-one, two, and three, and, and like our standard program, I mean, this is a pull system. So buildings, given their context, can pick the, the supports that fit best, and these are the supports we provide and are available to all the buildings, with the one exception that we do require CPI or de-escalation training for all our building staffs and train on Starting with tier-one, we do, do mental health screenings, fifth, eighth, and 11th grade, that's available for the building use. With a partner, with our partners, we provide trauma-informed care, training, this is to different degrees. So if a building says, "This is a big need in our, in our context," there's a, a whole school model that starts with PL and goes to direct services. There's also, there's three different tiers of that as well, so they could just have the PL or just have the direct services. We provide mindfulness training, and we also provide restorative mindset training, which are the proactive tools around restorative practices. As we move up, as Eric says, with the different decision-making criteria, we provide individual group, functional family, and substance abuse therapies, provided by our direct service providers, including Tanager, Four Oaks Abbey, Kids First Law, ASAC, and Unity Point Health. To different degrees, they provide these, these services based on the needs of the building and what the principals ask for. And moving up to tier-three, we do have offsite programming that I'll talk a little bit more about in each of those contexts. Thirteen of 21 buildings have direct mental health supports, and this is really falling into that tier-two level. And then all secondary schools have partner providers in their buildings as well. Any questions before we?
I have a question. So all buildings are offered programming, however, building teams are given autonomy to select programs that fit their context. Are they, are they encouraged to select one program, two programs? How many programs does each building carry?
Depending on the context, and there's lots of coaching that goes into that, but whatever needs that they have, they're provided a menu of options to select for to meet those needs.
So is there at least one that is required, that you have, you have to choose one?
So CPI is the one that we say every building is going to get de-escalation training. The other ones are opt-in or pull.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions here?
Who receives the CPI training?
All staff.
Okay.
So moving to the tier-three supports, this is really our alternative programming, and each alternative programming site has a different purpose. So Metro is really about credit recovery. It provides a really robust mentorship program in their advisory system that wraps their arms around kids, builds relationships, and gets them to recover those credits. Our Polk alternative site, this is for kiddos who have gotten into disciplinary trouble and have to be out of the building, or to the traditional setting for some time. We do have wraparound services that we provide, social, emotional, as well as academic plans in the, in that context. And then our online learning, we have in-house provided supports, as well as a partner organization called IowaNet High Academy, and both of these are for students who the traditional setting just doesn't work for.
So when we have, and I, again, I think in the community that there's just historically some maybe misunderstanding, so Metro High School isn't necessarily for students from our traditional high schools who have had disciplinary problems and behavioral issues.
It's decidedly not that.
Yeah, exact, exactly. So I think a lot of us understand that. Polk Educational Center does more of that with the wraparound services. So, so we have that, that small group of kids at the very top of the pyramid, in the red, at the point that it seems no matter what we do, mental health issues, or family issues, or anything, they're, they're creating issues at, at a school, say. And so are those the students, then, after we've tried to do all these other steps that are in this online learning, so that they're out of, you know, potentially hurting, harming others, or disrupting education of other students? What, what is that?
Potentially. It depends on their need. So if they just need, if they move through the counseling, if, if mental health is their, their prime struggle, and tier-two doesn't work for them, maybe they just need that consistency of an advisory program that Metro could provide. Maybe it is a one-off disciplinary issue that Polk could provide. Sometimes, when it's repetitive, that traditional setting just doesn't work for them. So it really depends on the need that the, the child presents.
So the online learning, the IowaNet High Academy, so how's that determine when a student would end up going to the online?
Yeah, so they would go through the district review process, and then through Rod's office and with Noreen in the high school setting, that would be how that's determined. In conjunction with the parents and?
Okay.
I'll turn it back over to Rod to talk about future programming.
So we got a lot of things going on, but I would say there's a lot more opportunity. I showed you the numbers to begin with, and we still have a lot of behavior challenges that we want to make sure that we continue to strengthen our program. So the first bullet around, continue to implement those structures with fidelity. You saw, we have the pyramid, we have the structures, but if we don't have leadership in staff really putting their energies and efforts into those, then we're going to continue to have these behavior issues. So really making sure that these structures are implemented with fidelity. We also want to make sure that as we begin to look at our system, the way that we staff these buildings is important. Not all buildings are made up with all the same type of children, and we need to take that into consideration when we're staffing the building. So one of the things that we're going to be working on over the next couple of years is looking at a more equitable staffing model. Not, not equal, but equitable, so that we make sure that we have the supports and the resources that our students need. We also want to expand on those online, online learning opportunities. You saw the two that are there, but we know that those could be strengthened. Develop the integrated community in- Develop an integrated community intervention team. This is, I think, a really important one. I think we're finding, and we know that we cannot provide all the needs that the students have in our buildings. How do we work with those community partners to come around the student, to help support them, their families, and all the needs that they present? How do we partner with law enforcement in a different way to help students be successful? Further, implement the Mentors in Violence Prevention Program. So how do we get other students in the buildings involved in helping their classmates and providing some of that mentoring? And then one of the strategies we're working on is family engagement, just how do we continue to involve our families? You know, because the research does show that the more the families are engaged and involved in school, the better their students do. So that's kind of the update.
I have a question. So, so thinking about the family side of it, and I don't know where we are as a district or even within the state, how this works anymore, but back in the day, there were staff in school districts, truant officers, or whoever that would work, the school counselors, and they would, they would be visiting homes and working with families, and, you know, I thought about Slaton Thompson from Grant Wood and working with the homeless students, and how many times the stories he and I talked about individual families, and that was really the key to helping them at that level, not, not the policy and institutional sorts of things. And I'm assuming that we still have staff. I mean, I hear principals talking about having to go out and things, but do we have intentionality in staff in the district that are working with the families at where they are?
We have a lot of those engagement specialists that we're talking about. They reach out to families. One of the things that we're working on with family engagement is a strategy. We kind of want to understand current state around it. But the success comes with, when we build that relationship with the family upfront, that is a positive relationship that gets them engaged, when we have a behavior issue, they're more likely to work together to help resolve that when you've built that positive relationship upfront. And so that's some of the things that we're working on, is how do we go about doing that? How do we have some of those home visits? And some of those buildings do that already, but how do we strengthen that to make sure that we're building those great relationships upfront before there's an issue?
Rod, you talked about implementing equitable staffing model. How do we accomplish that, because we seem to be having shrinking, shrinking resources rather expanding resources? Does that mean a redistribution of, of resources, redistribution of staff?
Yeah, I don't know what it all means yet, but that is a possibility. One of the things that I think we all need to understand is, you're right, there's no more money, but what we're, the challenges that we're having, we're having to find resources to help. And so, given the limited amount of resources we have, budget, as well as just the number of people, we're going to have to take a look at, at our current staffing model, and where might we shift some staff around? Dr. Buck, you want to?
Yeah, so the other thing I would, so right now, we do some work as it relates to equity in staffing. So if you were to look in our buildings, and it's true even in some of what you've seen tonight, is some number of schools have an engagement specialist, some have, some of our schools, I believe, actually even have two engagement specialists. And so right now, we already do some, some work as it relates to equity in staffing based on need. What we're talking about is transitioning to a model where there's some intentionality behind it in percentage of children in the building who are free and reduced lunch, percentage of the children who are in the building who are English learners, et cetera. And so building these models that then would say, based on that, this is how we would more equitably distribute resources to support the building. But because we already do some of that, it'll be interesting to see how much actual movement of staff that, that means, because it already has some amount of intended equity in it and not necessarily equality. So as we work through these models and become more intentional around it, it'll be interesting to see how it actually plays out, so.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, I believe folks know that one of our former board members, Keith Westerkamp, has served on the board for many years past away, and I would like if we could have a moment of silence for Keith, please. The board will now move into an exempt session to discuss strategies related to bargaining with union and non-union employees, groups such as a PRUCE, as allowed by the Iowa Code Section 20.173. We are now recessed.